Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, November 4th, 2024. It's 5 o'clock PM. Thank you all for joining us. First on our agenda tonight is a presentation from the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce. We have a new CEO, so if you haven't met Peter Tokar, now is a great opportunity to do so. He is joined by Julie Forsyth, who is the Senior Vice President of Business and Economic Growth. And you may know that Julie and I, Jeff and Decker, meet on a very regular basis. Last week, the last time we met, Peter joined us, so we were able to spend some time with Peter, but we've also had many other opportunities. So ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Julie Forsyth and Peter Tokar.
There's no applause, Peter, so don't.
I do kind of announce it like you're, you know, very important and have something important to say, so please.
Coming into the game.
Yeah. And now.
All right. Well, while Julie gets that presentation up and running, I'll go ahead and introduce myself. Again, Peter Tokar, I'm the new President/CEO of the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce. I've been in the seat now for about 10 months. My family and I relocated from the Dallas area back in January, so we got a warm welcome to Iowa. That was a joke. Freezing when we got here. No, we actually got here about the week before, the four feet of snow. So it was like, oh, this is great, and then, pff, snow. And then, and then, my kids love it, so I have four kids, nine, eight, six, and five, and they loved it. And then the next week, dropped it like 20 below. It was like, wow, this is awesome. And I tell the story, my, my third son, Logan, we have one of the Amazon Echo boxes there, and it tells the temperature all the time. And he came to me and he said, Dad, because what does it mean when there's a minus sign in front of the, in front of the temperature, I say it's sunny, means you need a new coat. So we went and got a new coat. But other than the weather, we've had a very warm welcome here to the Quad Cities. We've really enjoyed getting to the community. I'm happy to say that as of the end of September, I am now a resident of Bettendorf, so I'm not only my CEO, I'm a, we bought a house here in town, and we're enjoying all the benefits here of the city, and look forward to, like, every time we drive back, the water slide the park. My kids are like, can we go? We're like, it's not yet, not yet. We're really happy you guys have done that. So a little bit about my background, when the Chamber was looking for a new executive, they're looking specifically for somebody with an economic development background, and that's what I bring to the table. So I have close to 20 years of economic development background behind me, serving communities and regions, starting in South Florida a long time ago, and then working my way up to the north, north. So I'm doing it backwards, going further north instead of further south. But my wife is from the Midwest, so this is very, very close to home for her, so we're happy to be here. But within that 20 years, we've done a lot of different development projects, working with a lot of different types of industries, types of organizations, types of communities. So from a kind of professional background, that's really where my breadth of experience comes from, is really helping communities grow, thrive, look at doing smart development, taking the assets that are in the existing community, and leveraging those to what best suits the communities, so that we have positive growth. So really important in our trajectory is, is smart growth and doing what the community can support. And on that, I know that for the last several years, we've had a service level agreement here with the City of Bettendorf. And Julie's going to go through a lot of the, what's been going on lately in economic development, for you guys to know, to, to show what we're producing for the, for the community, and how we intend to move forward with representing the Quad Cities region from an economic development perspective.
Thanks, Peter. Good to see you all again. Just want to provide a high-level overview of last year, and we're happy to take questions at any time or after we're done here. So as Peter mentioned, we're in a current service level agreement with the city, and so these are the current services that we provide, the major lines within that services agreement, is regional marketing, business attraction, and business retention and expansion. And you can see some of those activities that align with those three major areas. And again, just as a reminder, we're currently focused and have been in the industrial sector over time, and we continue to be, up until, if you were a part of the, or was able to read the news in August, we had our annual meeting, at which time Peter announced Grow Quad Cities, which is an economic development organization with the Chamber. So these are the current activities, and so when he first, and again, we're a six-county region, so it's not just Bettendorf. We perform these services throughout the six-county region. But so industrial is, is the services agreement that we're currently in, but he talks about incorporating his experience in bringing greater development to the region, which would include mixed use and retail. And first couple of months Peter was here, I went with him around to all of our public sector partners, and we had conversations about the priorities in each community. And so we talked with Decker and Mayor and Jeff about priorities here in Bettendorf, and so really the direction dovetails nicely with the priorities and what's been happening in Bettendorf, certainly. So we look forward to the next year, but just looking back on fiscal year '24, this is a snapshot of the last three years. So this past year, we've had 122 million in total economic impact to the region, and we like to try to break that down a little bit, so it gets closer to what does that mean for you and your community. We have some economic impact modeling software, which only allows us to do it county by county, but you can see Scott County was able to pull in 38 million from that share of the total economic impact, and that is directly for the projects that the Chamber had a hand in over that time period. And so we had five successful projects last year, all expansion projects this past year. We don't get a, we'd love to, but we didn't get a business attraction project this last year. And so if you look at the past two years, the attraction project in fiscal year '23 would have been Fair Oaks Foods, fiscal year '22 would have been Amazon. So you can kind of see the numbers and how that tracks over time. These are the companies throughout the region where those expansions took place. We have numbers where we can, a couple there were not available. And so talking about the pipeline for Bettendorf projects over the past year, so there were six buildings or sites in Bettendorf that were submitted for four potential projects, and these are business attraction projects. So somebody who's looking to locate or relocate into the, the larger Quad Cities region. So there were six potential matches, and then right now, we have two active retention and expansion projects in Bettendorf. You probably know who they are, but in terms of confidentiality, I'm not going to say who they are, but there are two active projects that I believe Council knows about. So something that we do, and sometimes people forget about it, because you don't see the ads that are running and the marketing that we're doing, because it's all out of market. So we are trying to make sure that people know where the Quad Cities is and what's happening here in the regions, so we do quite a bit of regional marking, marketing. We want to tell the story of the Quad Cities and what it's like to do business here, and shine a light on the assets and the workforce and the businesses that are here, and why it's a great place to do business. Something that we focused on this past year was really trying to bring and drive people to our Economic Development Newsroom. Site selectors and site location decision-makers are always doing desktop research before we even have any idea that they're looking. And so our website hosts that information, so we have a lot of data there, and this was a campaign that was developed so that we could drive more of these folks to our website, to the landing page, and then sign up for a specific newsletter where they're going to learn about what's going on within the Quad Cities region. We had quite, quite a few different ads directed at them. For this particular campaign, it drove 1,578 people to our site in April during the campaign. So we're getting some clicks and we're getting some eyes. We also launched what's called a Field to Fame campaign, and the whole, the whole idea is John Deere was born here, successful here, over time, a lot of other companies can do the same. And so we had put together a mailer, sent that out to over 3,000 presidents and CEOs. It was integrated also digitally. We also partnered with Site Selection Magazine for a full-color, eight-page report on the Quad Cities region. They did interviews with businesses. So this is something that was in that magazine, and it was also directly sent as a piece to 41,800 people. So always trying to use this in a number of different ways, just beyond the original magazine inclusion. Field to Fame, here are some more print ads associated with that, and things that are out in Site Selector magazines and intelligence reports, print, print media. And Field to Fame, digital and social campaign, you can see some of the LinkedIn impressions and digital impressions, and again, that ad campaign ran May through June. So that's what's outside the universe that you're not seeing, but that is where some of your investment goes. A lot of these ads come back to our ag manufacturing and food production website pages, where we've got largest employers and a lot of stats and resources, so that people can see the benefit of doing business within the region. Business attraction, again, that's one of the main areas where we focus. A lot of that's lead generation, which you saw that, that advertising that leads to that, but also conversations with site selectors and companies out and about. I apologize. So we went to Select USA in Washington DC, and we always have the benefit of working out of both the Iowa and Illinois booth. This is the picture of the Illinois booth. I didn't get the picture of the Iowa booth in there. So Tammy Patchi is our Vice President for Business Attraction, and so she's out on the road going to site selector conferences and trade shows representing the Quad Cities region, and so we logged 235 out-of-market conversations about the Quad Cities with these folks. Something that we've been doing pretty regularly, and we've gotten a lot of traction and certainly a lot of support with our public sector partners and our business community, is a familiarization tour. And that is, this past summer, we brought in four national site selectors specializing in industrial site development, and took them all around the Quad Cities. Most importantly, meeting with businesses in the region, workforce partners in the region, resources in the region, and our public sector partners, so that they can really get a handle on what it's like on the ground. It's one thing to look at things from your computer as you do research, but it's really quite another to actually see it. And so Bettendorf has a lot to offer in that sphere, where you're talking about, hey, it's great to bring a business here, because there's great amenities, great place to live, great things to do. Jeff hosted us out at the TBK, and Iron T actually spent some time listening with Kevin Kellner, what that whole road to development looked like out there. Very impressive story, over the timeline, did some golf, and we always make that a part of it, because it really shows the full flavor of what the Quad Cities has. It's really important when they're making those decisions. And then we had a, they always love talking to the business owners. We had an Executive CEO Roundtable, and then Metro ED Practitioners Lunch, where Jeff participated. So got some FaceTime with those site selectors, always sharing what it's like in the Quad Cities, and it's really a good opportunity for them to see how our community partners really do work well together. And then business retention and expansion, so this is focused on our existing business in the region, and most of your economic growth is exemplified in the last year, is going to come from your existing business, so 80%, as much as 80%. So we really try to provide support and resources to those folks over the year. This is the folks that we went out to see in Bettendorf this past fiscal year, and so Chris Caves on our team, Vice President of BRE and Workforce, has conversations, what's going on in your business, are there any new lines of revenue, what's working, what's not working? And then tries to match resources or make business development introductions to folks at these companies. We also want to talk to not only our industrial businesses, but also our largest employers. And so these are the, these are the types of assistance that we log when we're out talking to our Bettendorf businesses, and you can see a lot of those look like workforce, workforce, workforce. There's some business-to-business referrals, some financial assistance, but we spend a lot of time making referrals and helping make sure those businesses know where they can get support. We also provide some state and legislative support through making sure our partners know of the businesses in the community, so that includes Iowa Economic Development Group. The Trade, Trade Group Tour was here not long ago, out visiting Caddis, as well as Director Durham and Iowa Representative Gary Moore made a stop at Leclerc Manufacturing. So trying to keep the business community eyes on it with our state partners and workforce partners, any partners that can be helpful. And then we are continuing with, we have grant, grant funding through the State of Illinois, Illinois Defense Manufacturing Consortium, and the great thing about that is it provides grant dollars that helps our community, both in Iowa and Illinois, because we are a region. And so this is focused, resources and help for our manufacturers and their supply chain. Casting and forging is the focus this round, and we've got some hub huddles and hub brews that help with education and networking opportunities for these folks. Workforce is a major issue, and so we are help facilitating solutions. An example of that is there is a fame program out of the Manufacturing Institute, which they focus on maintenance technicians and the building the pipeline through classes and education, partnering with a local education institution. It's really led by business, and so we invited businesses throughout the six-county region, over 60 manufacturers, to hear about this opportunity, including some Bettendorf businesses. So we are continuing the conversation. This is a skill set and type of jobs that are needed within our manufacturers, to work on this equipment, and advanced manufacturing, the maintenance technicians, it's a great career. So really trying to bolster that within the region and help facilitate those workforce solutions. And then Chris is on our, a number of workforce boards, which is a great boon to our region, both on the Illinois and Iowa side. And so again, elevating our businesses to the workforce boards, and also understanding funding through the workforce partners that we can get into our businesses' hands for training or upskilling, retraining. And then Mayor had mentioned the number of opportunities that we have to collaborate, and so we do throughout the year, whether it be full team, different roles within the organization, but certainly we convene and communicate and meet with our economic development partners, definitely on a regular basis in a number of different ways. And so some of those are listed here for you. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, so I let Julie do that, because she can do it way faster and more efficient than I ever could, but she does a great job. So a couple of things to highlight is, is thanks to your support that you guys have been giving us year over year, these are the activities that we've been able to continue doing and that we will continue to do year over year. Key highlight of this is that, one of the things to notice is that, that this program that we're reporting out on, the work that we're doing for you this year, is really focused on that industrial development sector. Julie mentioned, when I first got here, we met with Mayor Bob and Decker, and one of the first questions I asked was, is, are we doing what your community wants and needs? And because when we look at the future of what we want to do, the future of our economic development programming, I, I want the future of it not to be something that we say we're going to provide to you, but that you tell us to provide to you. We want it to be a two-way street, a partnership, to say like, well, if industrial development isn't what you're looking for, what are you looking for? What other types of economic development opportunities could we be bringing to Bettendorf to better serve your needs? Again, the focus of our future economic development programming is on smart development. It's on serving your community the way you want to be served. And so if we're not, if part of what we're doing, doing or have been doing is only meeting partial needs of the city, then we're not really giving you the best ROI for, for your investment. So looking forward, moving forward, I know there, there's consideration for our future years of funding and our relationship together moving forward. That's built into our new service level contract. And Julie mentioned that we just launched Grow Quad Cities. So a lot of you might remember Quad Cities First. This is kind of a revamped version of Quad City First. So Grow Quad Cities will be a regional economic development organization, serving the Quad Cities, but have a renewed focus on economic development priorities that are diversified for each of the cities that make, in areas that make up the Quad Cities. So we won't only be focusing on industrial development moving forward, we'll be looking at quality of place development, we'll be looking at mixed-use development, office development, all the different opportunities that the Quad Cities has that has been underrepresented in the past. And that's really the focus moving forward, is saying, how do we leverage what we've already done, the great work that's already been done for economic development, and make it better? And our version of that, our new version of that to make it better is by diversifying our economic development priorities for the region, to not just be focused on one industry, but be focused on all of the different opportunities that exist here within the Quad Cities. And we believe that will enable us to better serve all of our investors, which Bettendorf is certainly one of our investors.
Any questions for Peter or Julie while they're here? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Guys, thank you for coming here and your presentation. I'm probably one of the newest members of the Council, so my background is, is a little more limited. We had Visit Quad Cities here a while ago, and Visit Quad Cities said, one of the great economic development tools is getting people to the area. Once they get to the area they want to, you can help convince them to stay in the area, to take the jobs, to fill the manufacturing needs. I was wondering what things the Chamber does with Visit Quad Cities to try and grab the tourist population and get them integrated into the area. Do you focus solely on businesses?
So the three pillars of Grow Quad Cities will be business development, workforce development, and quality of place development. Business development being that business attraction, we want to try to recruit businesses here, recruit employers here, to provide quality jobs for the residents of Quad Cities. Workforce, obviously, how do we have a skilled, trained workforce of the businesses that are here, and new businesses that come in, have employees? But then that third element, quality of place, that's make, that's kind of, I call it the X-factor of the Quad Cities, and that dovetails very nicely into the work that that visit does, because tourism is part of that quality of place. If we create a good quality of place, people want to come see it, just like if you create, you know, a great work of art, like the Eiffel Tower, people want to go see it. So we're gonna focus our third tier of that effort on, what are those quality of place developments, and that can be entertainment, it could be retail, it could be arts, it could be humanities. One of the things we've identified as a key kind of place-making initiative is all the riverfront developments on both sides of the river. Just one of the cities, and I know Bettendorf, you have your presence on the river, but one of those projects launching will be one of those key attractors to bring people here to enjoy all the entertainment, or come here to live, or be a new place for more office building, or more jobs, more incentives. So it, it's all kind of a puzzle, pieces of a puzzle that fit together. And for example, the QC That's Where, that's in the packet there, that branding campaign, that was done in partnership with Visit Quad Cities. So we're both using, our, both of our organizations are using that QC That's Where brand to, to do out-of-market marketing, to try to showcase what are the opportunities that are here. We just, we're both economic development organizations with a different focus, where I see Visit and their message is to try to recruit tourists in, to, to be part of our economy, to bring, import dollars into our economy, and to experience our community. On the development side, we're trying to create those places that then they will sell to bring people here. So we want to try to create that next big entertainment zone, that next big X-factor for the, for the Quad Cities that then becomes a tourist destination, becomes an attractor for people to want to not only visit here, but I want to be part of that community. There's cool stuff happening there, and they come here and live here.
So is it fair for me to understand that Quad City Visit, Visit, Visit Quad City basically deals with trying to get people or organizations, and you're trying to deal with getting businesses into the area?
Yes, businesses and developments that will bring people here.
Okay. And then, Your Honor, just one other question, if I may. You talked about the agreement we have with the Chamber, and a new agreement is coming. I haven't seen it, haven't heard anything about it, but it sounds like you're going to make an ask for more. Do you have an idea of how much more money you're going to be asking for?
It's in progress. So the, the funding mechanism for Grow Quad Cities is designed to be a third public funding, a third private funding, and ideally a third grant funding, through federal grants, through local grants, through foundational, foundational grant. So currently, the funding that, that we currently get from the, all the cities in the Quad Cities equates through, what do we, about 27%?
Right now, it's 27%.
Right around 27%. Ideally, we'd like it to be 33%. So we've developed a five-year ramp-up over the next five years to go from 27% funding from the public side to 33. So we're looking at about a 6% increase over the next five years.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Other questions? Jerry, and then we'll go to Nick.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, a question, have we provided the Chamber with a copy of our latest comp plan, so they can update their chart?
I can't say that we hadn't delivered one, but...
Yeah. Okay, well...
It's available for them.
It's on the website.
Yeah.
We need to make it available for them, so they can update the map.
Oh, I think they're plenty aware of the maps.
Oh, okay.
I think, in fact, I think they might have showed it right out of the chute, the annexation map that's there.
But it's the old, it's the old one.
Okay.
I apologize. I, I grabbed, grabbed it, so I might not have grabbed the right one.
Okay.
So...
As we create our new marketing materials, we'll make sure we have all the utmost...
Yeah, and that's why I bring it up, is to make sure we're all up to date. And then the second question is, the number of successes is a pretty small number. What, what is the Quad Cities lacking, in your opinion, that we don't have more successes?
So I guess I, well, I guess I would say, so what does success look like? So it depends on what you're asking. So the successful projects that we had this past year, it was pretty, pretty good for the region to have that many successful expansions. What's really hard to quantify is when we are talking to existing business and we are connecting them with opportunities for grants that they can apply for, we connect them with a business where they could, perhaps, they could become a vendor, and maybe they get a new contract, that year-over-year is like another $50,000 or $75,000 a year. That stuff, that, that stuff on the back end, we don't hear about, and it's really hard to quantify. And so that doesn't make it kind of into our, our score chart. So, so it's, what is, so what does success mean to you? Are you talking about the big smokestacks, right, like the big Amazons? Or are you talking about, because the expansion projects, I mean, those are great successes for the companies that are here, and it takes a lot of planning. And so you're talking about for any of these projects, the project pipeline easily could be three, four years before it comes to fruition. And so there always could be more, of course, but I don't know if you want to speak to what's missing?
The, the life cycle of a project, in my, in the 18 years I've been doing economic development, the fastest project that ever came into fruition was six months. The longest one was five and a half years. And so the project lifecycle of some of these projects that we work on is a continual effort, year over year after year. So a lot of times that, that ROI is not immediate, but where you see the biggest return is, again, what Julie was saying, in those, I call it the BRE section, the Business Retention and Expansion. The work we do with the existing business community is paramount, because if we lose those existing employers, then you're setting yourself way, but you have to double your efforts on the recruitment side. So, and, and the stat is somewhere between 70 and 80% of all your growth historically is gonna come from your existing business base. So the work we do with those employers is economic development activity. Like Julie said, it's harder to quantify, because we may help them upskill some other employees, we may help them find a new source of revenue, so that they stay here, instead of taking their business and picking it up and leaving somewhere else. But from, to answer your more direct question, the, one of the things, from an outsider looking in, coming into the Quad Cities, I think one of our issues, we definitely have a people problem, so we need to find that X-factor to increase our population base, because it does us no good to go out and find those huge employers to bring them in, if we don't have people for them to hire. And so you're actually, then it's just gonna be a poaching game between, take 10 people from here, 10 people from here, and do that. So we need to develop... people from here, and do that. So we need to develop that X-factor. And the other thing is, I think while we've been very successful at doing industrial development over the last several years, we're missing an opportunity on all of those other priorities for economic development from a mixed-use perspective, from an office perspective. Because we've been so focused on one industry, we've missed out five other industries that we could have been promoting as well. And so that's where that, that diversification of our economic development portfolio, so to speak, comes into play, and that we will be able to see more wins, to see more results if we're on more playing fields, rather than just in one. The results we're seeing right now are from a, a very singular focal rifle shot, rather than a shotgun. And so we want to diversify those priorities and start getting multiple wins for multiple categories, and that shows more progress.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nick?
Thank you. Thanks for being here. So Peter, based on ten months of being here and your experiences as you bring with you, what do you see as the biggest opportunity for the Quad Cities today?
Biggest opportunity? One of, one of the biggest opportunities I see for the Quad Cities is that mixed-use development. And I think, I'll just say Bettendorf, I think you guys are leading the way, I think, with your developments out with TBK Park. You know, that type of quality-of-life development is what people want in a community. It's what draws people to the area. It's what brings economic development activity. And there are pockets all over the Quad Cities region on both sides of the river that have that same opportunity, that I think are further behind than Bettendorf is, but hold the same opportunity. And I think those are the types of pictures we need to be painting of the region to bring that regional success in. So one of the biggest opportunities, again, because from an industrial perspective, like I said, it's, it's, we've, we've done a good job, but we're kind of at that inflection point where we really need more people. Well, how do we get more people? We need to ramp up that quality-of-life side. So from, from an opportunist's perspective, I think that life, quality-of-life development pillar is really where the immediate future lies.
Thank you. And second question, so other than funding, what do you need from the city of Bettendorf?
Just continued partnership. I mean, I think we have a great partnership with the city. We have a great relationships with the staff. Just keep those lines of communication open. And, and really, feedback. From my perspective, as we're going out, as we're doing things, we want to, we want to stay agile. We want to stay mobile. So providing feedback of, hey, the last X amount of things that you guys brought us, we're not looking for that anymore. We've shifted and pivoted and are going that way. So just keeping those lines of communication open are paramount.
Cool. Thank you very much.
That's all.
Other questions? All right. Well, Peter, Julie, thank you very much for being here. Excellent job with your presentation. We look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
December sixth, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
December sixth.
Economic what?
Economic Forecast Audit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Prism City. We'll be there.
Come join us for our Economic Forecast, December sixth.
We have a table.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Peter.
Great rest of your evenings. Now let's move to our items to appear. We have one. Items seven and eight, the same item. This is the public hearing and the resolution. For our sign ordinance, and for discussion on this, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mr. Mark Hunt, and our Senior Planner, Mr. Taylor Beswick. And I think I misspoke. I said resolution, but it would be an ordinance. Thank you.
Yeah, an ordinance. That's correct, Your Honor. And just a real quick refresher, because we did have a presentation October fourteenth at that council cycle, where we went to the details of the code update. But we're updating our sign ordinance to allow digital billboards. But what we're really doing is getting a really good understanding of what we have for billboards in our community. We're gonna limit the total number of billboards to nineteen or less. If you read the code, it's a reduction factor if you want to add a billboard or convert one to digital. So I would say for the first time maybe ever, we have a really good understanding of what our landscape of billboard looks like, where they can go, and kind of where we want them to go. So the cool thing about this, and I'm gonna call it the win-win, is that we have the incumbent providers that want to move to digital, and we're able to help them do that as staff by allowing that digitization in our code, but also get rid of some of the billboards that are non-conforming in areas of town where we don't want to have them. And so we have the incumbent providers that are happy with that. They're okay with that, that deal, but it also gives us control of the city of kind of where we have these, these located in our town.
Questions for Taylor or for Mark? Okay, this will appear tomorrow evening as items seven and eight for a public hearing and our first ordinance reading. Let's move to our consent agenda items for tomorrow. Agenda item F. This will be explained by our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt. This is our HDR agreement. Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city was awarded $2.7 million grant through Congresswoman Miller Meek's office to cover the preliminary engineering for the future Middle Road Reconstruction Project that will extend just south of Forest Grove Road to just south of Crow Creek Road. And this project, we intend to be broken up into two phases. Obviously, with the new Genesis development happening on the west side between Forest and Hopewell, we will have that as our first phase, with the second phase continuing from Hopewell down to Crow Creek. The improvements that are planned are to include two lanes of traffic in each direction on Middle Road with a median multi-lane roundabouts at Sixty-third Avenue. This is kind of where the proposed Mercy One entrance is between Hopewell and Forest. And then also a roundabout at Hopewell Avenue, a reconstruction and enlargement of the existing roundabout at Fifty-third and Middle, and streetscaping and other related work. So this is a pretty significant project for the area. The preliminary schedule has the first phase designed and ready to bid by the end of 2025, pending construction, funding, availability, that we will be, that we will be discussing as we move into budget later this year.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian on this engineering project? Greg, A.
Thank you, Mayor.
[laughing]
I'm not in your business at all, but I was kind of shocked at the price tag on engineering. Is that, did that shock you at all, or was it, is that pretty normal?
It's pretty consistent, but this also includes construction staking and a lot of work. I mean, this, we're talking about, you know, designing three new roundabouts, you know, running traffic projections through these, through the, the whole corridor and whatnot. So we, we feel that they're pretty in line with what's, what is the standard. They were in line with, when you sit there and you look at the overall length of what the Forest Grove corridor, you know, was involved in, we're comfortable with these numbers. And then this will all be covered under the grant.
Sure.
We plan on, we're, we were awarded $2.71 million, and we're asking a purchase order for $2.1 million. So everything that we were talking about today will be covered under the, underneath that grant.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you. It just, yeah, just a big number.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other que, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we have any hope of getting project funding from the Congressman?
We certainly have hope.
Yeah, if, if you recall, there's an earmark portion of legislation that allows a certain dollar amount for each district to be allocated. We, we knew we weren't going to be able to seek the funding for the project until we had the engineering in hand. So we did this as a two-phase. We would certainly hope that once we get the engineering done, we can apply through the office for some of the construction. I doubt we will get all of the construction money because the allocation to the district is, that's about the entire district allocation. I think we're at about sixteen million estimate. Am I right, Brian? I would expect that there's a possibility of maybe a third of that to try to seek. So we'll have to have other sources as well.
She's up for reelection tomorrow, so we'll know later in the evening whether or not we have any hope. So, other questions? All right. Let's take a look at our consent agenda items that remain. Any particular council member has a, have a question or a thought on any of the other consent agenda items for tomorrow night? Yes, Greg, J.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I'd like to move to place Consent Item I on regular agenda for separate vote.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will come on to our regular agenda, wherever you want to put it, Mr. Administrator. I would assume, maybe nine, but whatever.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah.
You bet. I will become part of the regular agenda. Anything else on, yes, Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just curious, the item G, is that a bid item?
So Frank, that item is, we use our sole source provider for that. So we always get a discount if we order before the end of the year, before prices go up in January. So it is not a bid, but it is a sole source. We've been using D and K for as long as I've been here, so.
Any other questions or thoughts on consent? All right. May entertain a motion then to approve all remaining consents agenda items except for I, for approval on consent tomorrow. Lisa, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't have anything to add to tomorrow night.